This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. It is 6:08 PM on March 24th, 2022. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Beta City Council. Roll call.
Jason Daly.
Jason needed to be excused for work reasons.
Randy Hall.
Yes.
Mike Farson.
Mike also needed to be excused for work reasons.
The member Lovely.
Here.
Mayor Shai.
I am, so here.
I'm here. Oh, you were the first thing I'll need to sort. Hand back. Happy to have the love right now.
There are eight minutes late. We're in a hurry. Pleasure to be here. Your Hall, please do not.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. The Warden Park Playground Park project, if anyone's been driving around down there, you can tell that it is ongoing. The excavation and concrete is complete. Today, they actually paved the gravel area out there on A Street, so we have a nice fresh pavement out there. The equipment that's installed for the playground is scheduled for the 28th, is that correct? 29th?
Twenty, uh, I guess it's 29th.
29th, I'm off by the day. So, we're next week. The wastewater plant, the options for the leaking pond liner that we mentioned last meeting, those options are being discussed. They have figured out a simple fix if they need to route around the issue. Hopefully, they're able to fix it as it sits right now. I haven't re-engineer anything, though. And also, the lab building, it's actually built already, and the drywall is up, and they're gonna start painting here. And so, there's a whole structure down there we've never seen before, unless we've been down there recently. So, quite, coming along quite well.
I missed it. I wasn't here the last time. But the liner, what happened to the liner?
It's one of the new pond liners. There is so much groundwater behind the pond liner. It's actually, they're saying four to five PSI worth of groundwater pushing in from behind. And the manufacturer, the liner is designed to keep water from leaking out of it, but not from keeping water from leaking into it, which seems like a thing that if it does one, it would do the other. But anyway, there's an engine and a reason why they say it's not. In any case, they need to figure out a way to account for the amount of groundwater that's trying to push in.
Yeah.
Like, um, cut the new route of water?
Um. There's leak sensors underneath the liner. If it ever does leak, they're able to.
No, no, like the water that's pushing.
Yeah, so there's leak sensors under there, and those leak sensors have to go through some type of rubber boot that's in the liner. And they're going to re-engineer the rubber boot so that it can keep the groundwater out.
Okay.
Some type of hardware fix that they're gonna do. There's not much they can do about the groundwater because, I guess, the groundwater level.
Is that possible?
It's low. This day, it's not. Yeah, the groundwater level between the, because the creek is over there, and just all the water in the city kind of drains that way.
Wayne, yeah.
Ammonin Road. We're waiting on the county's response to our request for the county and Beta sharing in the expense of repairing that road. So, we're still waiting on that response. And the urban design standards, if you remember, last year, we got a grant from the county to completely revolve our urban design standards. Our city engineer, Mr. Willie, is nearing completion on that, and he hopes to have that done next month. Also, not on the agenda, one of our newest employees, Kristen Miller, has successfully completed her probationary period. So, congratulations.
There's stuff now.
Another amazing employee that the city's lucky to have. And also, if anyone's interested, the city signed up for a free service from Med Project. We have these envelopes available here at City Hall. You can come pick one up. And if you have any unused medication that you need to dispose of properly, pick up one of these envelopes, and it'll get sent back. Free of charge. Keeps out of the landfill. So, that service is available here. And anything else on the mayor's report that I'm forgetting?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's enough. Moving on to council reports. Any council members have anything to report?
I was talking to Diane about maybe setting up vouchers again. We've been getting a lot of pets in. Maybe set up the vouchers again for the neutering and spaying.
Oh, had a, okay, yeah, the city did do that. Was it last year, year before last?
Yeah.
We did?
Two years ago.
Yeah, we had a, we had a city budget to be able to have people come in and pick up a free voucher for getting their pets better neutered. It's kind of gotten dropped. I guess we just forgot about it.
Yeah, well, with COVID, they weren't doing it, so.
They started doing it, so.
Yeah, so, but they're starting it up again, so.
Okay.
Thought it would help.
Good suggestion. Okay.
Who's starting it up? Where?
Uh, just people moving in, and you got pets and.
No, no, but I mean, yeah, but only the voucher gives you a discount, no matter where you take.
Right, right.
I think we had a place set up that.
Wasn't this the cat's meow or something like that, where people would take their cat, and they would collect them and take them aboard to a vet. He would do spay and neutering, and then bring them back down, and they would charge only like $10 a pet. It's very cheap.
Yeah.
I don't think they're doing that service anymore since of COVID, so I'll have to find something new.
Yeah, we can look it up in the record that we did last time, and then.
There is some place in the coma.
Yeah, that's.
Well, that's, that's several times, and they pick up cats in Centralia. Someone was telling me about that one.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Anything else? Any other council reports? Um, here now, moving on to agenda approval. Don't believe we have any changes to the agenda. Just that title, the number one? Oh. Well, let me take care of that. Can approve the agenda with those changes, if you know the changes, please.
Okay. Well, how do we do this? We're putting it in the spot. Approved the voucher approval by end of March 2022. From, the new total is 557,439.06 cents.
So, you want to approve the agenda. We're on agenda approval, so.
Oh, I thought it said.
So, approve the agenda with the changes.
Wait, okay.
Listed in here. So, there's, like, there's three changes.
No, it's just two.
Immediate first voucher approval, immediate first of February 2022.
Yeah, it's okay. It's just March.
Seven one dollars. February, new monthly total, 713, 766.15. End of March, 550, 11148.
Those are the change.
Oh, I see. 557, 439.07. The monthly, March, would be 584, 055.47. Make a motion to approve that.
I second.
The, the agenda.
There was one more change on the file.
Oh. That one?
No, that's city business.
We're still on the agenda approval item. So, we're approving the agenda with the noted changes.
Right. I second. And first.
Someone say it.
The amendment was different.
So, make a motion to approve the agenda. I won't put words in your mouth, so that's what we're looking for.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, as described.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve the agenda with the changes to the vouchers and city business item number one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by. And MacIntosh.
Shame on you.
I'm so flustered, you guys. Discussion?
Yeah.
Here now, all those in favor approving the agenda as described, second.
Aye.
I have this last one.
I'm just confused. I'm here, though.
I stay that way, so.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of approval.
I make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes for March 10th, 2022.
You have a motion by Miss Lovely to approve the council meeting minutes from March 10th, 2022. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Ms.
Geez, MacIntosh.
Yes, gee.
With the MacIntosh.
Thank you, Simon.
Any discussion here? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. It's one of those nice votes. Now, we are to voucher approval.
Uh-huh.
Wait, what voucher? That's what I was trying to do, and you said that wasn't right.
We're on agenda approval. Now, we're on voucher approval.
I make a motion for the voucher approval, amended first of February 2022, 71 dollars. In February, new monthly total, 713, 713,000, 766, 15, excuse me. End of March, 2022, 557, 439.06. And March monthly, 2022 total, 584,055.47.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve the vouchers, as noted, and a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Miss Lovely. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Beta Park Board, monthly report.
So, you already heard, with Warden Park, the excavation concrete work has been completed. The equipment is scheduled to come in, or to be, to start being installed on Tuesday, March 29th. They're planning on working from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and they'll probably begin staging from somewhere between 7:00 to 8:00 AM. So, other than that, we have the events. So, it's just kind of a reminder, our shredding, actually, hold on, sorry, our trips for trail event. We are offering city pickup, April 26th to 27th from 14. And we have our number to call, which I'll go ahead and say we're on record, is 360-218-4257. And then, the drop-off, which is open to the county, is April 30th from 10:00 to 3:00 o'clock. And let's see, shredding. We have our document, sensitive document shredding event that is happening Saturday, May 21st, from 10:00 to 1:00, and that's gonna be over in the daily storage parking lot, correct? Okay. Thank you. And then, um. Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry. I was trying to figure out how that fit in here. And then, May Day, but right now, Parks is planning to participate in May Day, so we are gonna have a table. And at the table, we'll have a flyer set up with information on what we've been doing and how we're doing it. There's been apparently a lot of questions on how we're paying for the park, so it's kind of just a refresher on the breakdown of how that's being funded, and make sure we get that accurate information out to the public again. And also, there's gonna be a all-class fund, or no, there's gonna be an all-class Vader student reunion. Thank you. And we're gonna be having, there, we are selling the history books for Vader as a fundraiser, and it sounds like a lot of people are coming, are already pre-ordering those books, and we're selling those for $25 a book. Oh, is it 20 still? Okay. All right, so right now, it's still 20. Okay, and then, other than that, we have, tonight, we have our, I almost called you an eagle style already. We have one of local boy scouts, his name is Jesse Folt, and he wanted to do a presentation and a request to do a project at McMurphy Park. And I'm gonna go ahead and introduce to have Jesse go ahead and come on up here and have him talk to you about that.
Still can't get the presentation. All right, uh, wait a minute. Okay.
Okay.
One second here.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jesse Folt. I'm a link out from truth 9324. I've been working with Mr. Shire for the past month, month and a half, talking about putting in a staircase on the bank in the river at McMurphy Park. Currently, it is very unsafe. Me personally had to get down on my hands and crawl down the bank to get down. I have some pictures of it right here. It's quite steep, and there are also tree roots in the way that make it difficult to put in a staircase as well. I've been working with a friend of mine, Dan Ross, he's a contractor. He's come up with an idea where we can use verrotize as the steps and secure them to the bank using rebar. And hopefully, we can work with the tree roots there, so you don't have to remove any trees or tree roots. As well as we want to cover the steps with gravel, so that we can make them as stable and secure as possible without building a solid structure that could get washed away and flood. As well as the handrail, we thought it wouldn't be applicable to build a solid handrail. We thought it would be easier to put in metal fence posts of galvanized steel, and just bore holes through them and putting wire cable through for a handrail. So, that way, if one does come loose or gets dislodged and flooding, or the bank starts to collapse a little bit, it can be fixed easily without having to replace the whole structure. And he's gonna be, a general quote, he's not quite sure of the exact price as of right now, just because there are so many unknown factors with the condition of the bank. It's anywhere from 800,000 dollars with, like you said, anywhere from six to eight steps. I believe that is everything I can think of off the top of my head. Thank you.
Questions? Any questions?
Good.
Thank you.
So, are you requesting approval from the council to continue for that, it's a part of the project, so that you can continue on with your Eagle Scout project?
Yes, I have requested permission from the council to continue with my Eagle Scout project.
I see, yeah.
I make a motion to continue approval of this project.
You have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve Mr. Folt's continuation of his Eagle Scout project. Do we have a second?
I second.
I'll second that.
It's MacIntosh. And third, by Miss Lovely. Any other discussion or questions?
No, I think that was.
Good work, yeah.
I have a question about having verrotize next to the creek. Do you think there's any restrictions, EPA, about that?
What do you?
Good thing to look up.
I'll look at it. I'll try my alternatives as possible.
What do you think of the chemicals on the verrotize?
The river does it all the time.
Yeah.
But what the river does isn't mean you can do it. All right, well, if there's another discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Here now.
All right, thank you.
Planning Committee, monthly report. Any monthly report from the planning committee tonight? If not, I know that they were discussing accessory dwelling units, some, some more. So, that work is still ongoing. All right, moving on to city business. Item number one, council considered Park and Sons' pay request. Warden Park excavation, you see that in your, in your document, that, that total is minus their, the 5% retainage. And so, in the, in the short term, we'll keep that retainage cost, and then eventually, was it 30 days? 16 days? 45 days. Assuming there's no other issues and the work is actually completed, they'll give that to retainage. And this was the progress billing. You see the handwritten notes here from Diane. There were a couple of issues that, that we found with their original pay request, was that they charged us for a permit when their project didn't actually call for a permit, so we subtracted that $500 fee from that. And so, you can see that the, the total that we're requesting tonight is the 57,349.60.
Do we need to approve it?
Yes, please.
We can make a motion to approve the progress billing to clarify concerns, 57,349.60.
You have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve the pay request for Park and Sons. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
If you have any other discussions, please allow me to discuss them. Here now, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. City Business Item Number Two, council considered Park and Sons' change order, rock delivery, lay-in, and labor, label, labor for the leveling. During the construction of the project, we did find that there was a significant amount of rock needed to level that area for the sidewalk preparation and to get it to the right elevation for the playground. And so, the change order came in at $3,500, and you can see the breakdown on that for the, the rock, the labor, and the trucking.
They couldn't affect it right in at the beginning?
It was not factored in at the beginning. I don't wanna say they couldn't affect it at the beginning, but it was not factored in at the beginning.
They ought to be giving a bonus for backing trucks down East Street every time they're having to go back.
Yeah, they were, they've made some comments about the dump site that we provided for, and how it was not exactly.
Well, they ran over a few corners and stuff.
The easiest thing to get to.
Well, they may. They didn't run over my water, me. That's what I was worried about. You think, does this seem fairly reasonable?
It does, yeah. I mean, if you look at, I mean, 800 for the, for the actual rock, labor, they did have workers out there with these vibration machines, so that they, they compacted the rock everywhere. I mean, they did all, everything that they, they listed.
They, so it was probably kind of a unknown to them that the cost on the dish.
Yeah, it was a lot of rock.
All right. I make a motion to approve the annual change of clock excavating for 3,500.
You have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve the change order as written. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. MacIntosh. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, council would consider the May Day Committee request for city-funded event insurance cost up to $500. The May Day Committee representative who is here tonight is requesting that the city pay for the May Day Festival event insurance. We do have a special event lined out in the budget, so we absolutely have this money available. And it's a great thing to do, to do for the city.
I do a motion to approve the May Day Committee request for the city-funded insurance for up to $500.
It's about a motion by Ms. MacIntosh to approve the May Day requests, May Day Committee requests for up to $500 with the event insurance. Do we have a second?
A second.
I'll second that.
By Mr. Hall. Discussion. Here now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, council would consider awarding a bid to a contractor for jail and chimney repair, jail chimney repair and roof replacement, and authorizing mayor to enter the contract. In your documents, you will see the bid solicitation as well as the three different bids that we did yet. We sent out requests to 50 or so different companies, and we got three responses. The first response, it looked in there, is from Fine Polo Construction, 5,100 plus tax for the chimney, and another 1,900, 19,400 for the roof. So, we're looking at, we're adding that number up, but what is that?
19,400.
I mean, the railing.
56.
We're not gonna do the railing.
It says 19,400, I'm on.
Yeah, so, so if you see there, I have, 5,100 is the chimney portion of the bid, and 19,400 is the roof portion of the bid, for a total of $24,500 to do both pieces of work. That's the first bid. The second bid, on the back page of that, is from Northwest Remodel and Design for $36,000. And the third bid that we got from J.A. Morris Construction is for $82,000.
Well, the Fine Polo is a local company, and we had pretty good experience with them.
Yes, absolutely. They are, the company did the foundation for the jail just recently, and they did a superb job.
What was the total and fine polo for everything?
It's 24,500 plus tax, so tax will be on top of that.
Yeah, with the chimney, the fireplace, your roof.
Yeah, so the chimney, what, the couple of works we sent out, and the descriptions in the back. But enough, though, it's the chimney.
Yeah.
Take the chimney apart, down to one foot into the attic, so the entire exterior of the chimney, plus a little bit into the attic. Disassemble the chimney, clean up the bricks, reuse the original bricks as much as possible, and rebuild the exterior of the chimney to its original form, plus a cap. That way, we don't get water in it. It's missing a cap now. Now, the second part of the job will then be to replace the roof with new cedar shake, and any, and the decking as well. And so, you can see that in the estimate that, take down the old roof to the trust, put in new plywood sheeting, put in a waterproof membrane, replace the old shake with new cedar shake, all new supports, trim boards, and edge flashing, dry rod repair, replace some rod as needed, and clean up the site.
And put a stainless steel liner on the chimney, the cap, or is that?
Uh, yeah, so it'd be, it's option number two is the one I'm recommending, which is just the fireplace down to one foot in the attic. Take out. Take out the existing brick from the top to a foot into the attic and replace with updated cement, new flashing, like that.
Okay.
We're not going to use the car.
That's correct. That currently the the wood stove that is in there is not even connected to the chimney. So it's fairly decorative at this point.
Is it remaining in there? Okay.
It's in the title on that one, 24.
Yep, 24,500.
I make a motion to approve the Fine Polo Construction bid, 24,500 plus cap.
A motion by Mr. Hall to approve the, awarding the bid to Fine Polo Construction Restoration. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Miss McIntosh. Further discussion?
I suppose there's not any real unknown items that we wouldn't come out with two months.
With that building, everything is unknown.
Why? Well, true. But they, they do have the best bid. You can probably.
They do.
You can deal with it.
Do quality work.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Preparationary employee Krista Miller, now regular, part-time, 24 hours a week. So as I announced in the mayor's report, Smiller is, has successfully completed preparationary period. This line item was just to to the approval of, it would be to approve the change of job scope.
And the extra hours.
And the extra hours from 20 to 24. And we have a I guess this document here is not that, but or do we have some thoughts about that?
Yeah.
It's not worthy enough. Employee status change, performance reviews of all city employees, there are three, three status changes. Smiller has passed her preparationary six-month period. Her status has changed and her role has changed. So we've shifted some of the job roles around somewhat. So from the deputy clerk to the, we're now, what we want to call now the deputy billing clerk. So previously, your job role was considered the clerk administrator, correct? That was the right one? And so, it's more appropriate to call it a deputy billing clerk. And then also, the approval of an extra four hours per week of work time.
Paid or unpaid?
Wait a minute.
Looking for a motion to approve that. Obviously, it will have a slight effect to the budget. But there is a budget amendment on the next line item that we'll talk about.
I make a motion to approve the new status of Kristen Miller, deputy billing clerk in Platte Winter. Job restriction, deputy committee in finance, but just four hours for deputy billing.
A motion by Mr. Hall to approve the changes. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Miss McIntosh. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six, 2022 budget amendment. So it's customary for a city to do budget amendments occasionally through the year. This case, there were two two major things that prompted this, this budget amendment. First, there was a slight type of, when we approved the budget in 2021 at the end of the year, there was an issue on the Excel spreadsheet and it miscalculated some of the employees' hourly rates by about a dollar and a quarter. And so, they were, they were getting paid correctly, but just in our budget software, it was just a little wrong. So that worked out to about 12, it was about $1,200 a person times three different positions. And then there was also a change to insurance that changed and so really didn't have much of a, much of an impact. It was $6,000. The one big thing was in, if you remember at the end of 2021, we had already approved the jail foundation work. And, but that, but that work didn't actually get completed in 2021. It got completed this year. And so we didn't spend that money in 2021. And we didn't account for that last year because we approved the, approved the budget at the beginning of December. And so, by the end of December, we still hadn't spent that money yet. So we needed to roll that money over into 2022 that we didn't spend in 2021. And if you look at, oh, this page, oh, it says one of one. There's a lot of one of ones in this. Anyway, it's the one with two green lines on this one right here, towards the back. Yeah, look at the, the second line down from the top, two, three, four, five, page six. You see there that the parts improvement, we had budgeted 17,750, but we neglected to put the $30,000 that we didn't spend in 2021 in the budget for 2022. And so we're just including that in there. So you call it missing money. In a good way. So those are the changes to the, the major changes to the budget. And then there's shifting around of some payroll. Diane, you want to describe that?
The benefits and whatnot?
Yes. Yes, with the error of the, actually, the quality scale here that we approved in December, when that is corrected, like the mayor said, it's about $6,000. And then the additional hours for the deputy billing clerk. And also, we reallocated where the money came from. There was, it's not a huge difference, about a thousand dollars, a couple hundred dollars maybe. And then, yeah, $30,000 actually gives the total.
Can we explain that adequately?
Okay.
You can see on the spreadsheet.
So, if you, there's ordinance that goes along with it.
Need to approve it, please. I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-01 with the dollar changes as described. You want me to read it?
Sure.
Ordinance of the city of Vader, minimum annual budget for the city of Vader, Washington, the calendar year 2022 by increasing the current expense, fund expenditure by $33,430.30 and decreasing the sewer fund $3,411.32. Just in the same code to affect the budget amendment hereby provided.
A motion by Mr. Hall to approve ordinance number 2022-01. Do we have a second? Second by Miss McIntosh. Further discussion?
The, uh.
The expenditures?
Yes.
The total of expenditures, $5,634,769,065. Make motion to approve that in the ordinance.
Okay. And did we have a, we had a second by Miss McIntosh already?
Yeah.
Alright, further discussion? Hearing none, all those approved in favor of approving ordinance 2022.01, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The last item of city, city business is an executive session. Executive sessions are, in this case, would be, the public would not be invited to attend this. This is for council members only. So if the technical agrees, we can do as we can do any public comments that the public may have tonight. And at that point, I'll move on to the executive session and then we will just not re-adjourn the meeting after that. That way, the public does not have to hang around and wait for us to come over our executive session. Does that sound reasonable? Is there any public comments? Or anyone that just wants to talk?
So, I can't out from Wazdaw that if we hang a banner across 506, it has to be approved by the city. So I'm asking for approval from the city before I order the banner.
For me?
For me, yeah.
Where's it going to be?
It's going to hang from one pole to the next.
Which poles?
I don't know which. Probably around the post office area. A street.
Are we going to do it up there?
I have my ways.
I just have a few questions. It's very high about trucks and stuff.
It has to be 20 feet above the highway and it, it has certain dimensions. It has to be two by four vertical, 20 by 24 horizontal, horizontal. I still have to get permission from PUD. And I've got the application for that. And I have to get permission from CenturyLink and I don't have that figured out yet, but. Yeah. Yeah, hang on the poles. And probably I can get somebody with a bucket truck. Yeah.
Sounds, sounds very decorative.
Joe, do you want a motion for that or?
Why not?
I'll make a motion to allow Anita to hang the banner from one pole to the other across 506.
We have a motion for Anita to hang the banner.
It's not going to be Anita.
It can only be Anita because she's supposedly got to have the answers.
I got that. Do we have a second?
I said.
Second by Mr. Hall. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I also want to, I also want to let everybody know that April 6 is our next May Day meeting. If you want to find out what's going on, the excitement, what's going on, come to Little Crane at 5 o'clock.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Good. Hearing none. We will move back to the executive session. I'll ask the public to clear the council chambers so that the council members can have a discussion. We will not reconvene this council meeting. So everyone have a good night and it is 6:52 PM.